Good evening. I am calling the St. Louis County Council meeting to order Tuesday, January 26, 2021 at 6:30 PM. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Of America.
And to the republic.
To the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
indivisible.
With liberty.
Justice.
For all. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Days.
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Present.
Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Webb.
Here.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Tracus.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. I believe that this particular point, Councilwoman Clancy wished to be heard. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Before proceeding, I'd like to provide a statement for the record. As you all are aware, there continues to be a dispute about who is Chair of the St. Louis County Council. I continue to heed the advice of our Counselor's Office, who maintains that according to the Charter, I am the Chair and Councilman Tracus is the Vice Chair of the Council. The issue is in the hands of the Circuit Court, and I want to make clear that I will adhere to the interpretation of the court when it comes. Like last week, I reached out to Councilwoman Days late this afternoon to talk about how we can have a smooth meeting tonight. She shared her intent to preside over tonight's meeting. Councilwoman Days, if that is still your will, so be it. I do, however, want the record to reflect my objection to this action, but in the meantime, we do have important items on our agenda, and we must get on with our business to the best of our ability until the judge makes their ruling over the matter. So let's proceed.
Thank you very much.
Further discussion, please.
Who was that? Was that Councilman Tracus?
It was, it is.
I am recognizing you, sir.
I just want to second Councilwoman Clancy's objection. I concur with it, and I want that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. Is there a motion for approval of the Journal for Jan- of the Journal for January 12th, 21?
So moved.
Second?
Second. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? The Journals for January 12th, 21 is approved. Is there a motion for approval for the Journal of the Special Meeting of January 15th, 21?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. It's January 15th. Journal is approved. We will hold on January 19th for a further review. Moving right on to bid openings. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises, zoning matters, or road and bridge matters this evening, so we will move to other communications. Under Other Communications, item number one.
Received, filed, and the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. This will be the same motion through item number three.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One moment. Item number four, Sixth District.
Received, filed, the deposit agreement in subdivision Pat Splat, be approved as recommended.
Is there a second?
Sir?
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number five.
Received, filed, appropriation transfer be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number six, all districts.
Received and filed, that will be the order.
Item number seven. That is District Four.
Received, filed. Excuse me, I'm having technical difficulties. My screen just went down. Received, filed, and refer to the Department of Transportation and Public Works, the Department of Planning, and the County Council.
So ordered.
Item number eight, First District.
Received, filed, and the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number nine, Third District.
Received, filed, and the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 10, Fourth District.
Received, filed, and the County Council. And the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 11, Fifth District.
Received, filed, and the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 12, Seventh and Second Districts.
Received, filed, and the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Point of order, please. Point of order.
State, the point of order.
I'm requesting a committee of the whole on this proposed legislation. Agreements that had been in place were necessary for this approval have now expired, and there are a host of other questions. I think it's appropriate that we have a committee of the whole prior to this legislation moving through the process. So I'm requesting that. Committee of the whole.
We can do that. We will set that up as soon as we can possibly get that in. Thank you.
Item number 13.
Received and filed, and that will be the order.
Item number 14.
Received, filed, and the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 15.
Received, filed, and the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. That will be the same motion through item number 18, and that will be the order.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One moment. Item number 19, Fifth District.
Received, filed, and the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
And that will be the order.
Item number 20.
Received, filed. And, and hold on the order of business, and we refer to this as a committee of the whole, and that will be the order. Does the County Executive have a report this evening?
Good evening. More than 320,000 people have now pre-registered for the vaccine with our Department of Public Health. This shows the immense interest there is in getting the vaccine. And here and across the country, the interest is high, but the supply remains low. We've received less than 5,000 doses so far from the state, and although we do anticipate about 4,000 more later this week. We anticipate the number of doses in future shipments to increase, but we do not have more details on how much vaccine we will get or when. With the registration list, we can easily contact those who have signed up to receive the vaccine as we make our way through the system set up by the state. We will not contact someone from the list to set up an appointment unless we are confident we have the vaccine in hand to supply the shot. Across the country, appointments have been made, but the provider did not receive the vaccine as inspected. We're not going to do that here. The most preregistrations are in the 1B Tier Two category, which includes those 65 and older, and those 18 to 65 with high-risk medical conditions. The preregistration trends showing low participation in many of our North County zip codes are consistent with pre-existing racial and socioeconomic disparities. We must engage communities that are underrepresented to ensure everyone has access to the vaccine. And that is our commitment. Here are a few things we are doing. We hired Damon Brodas as our new Director of Health Promotion. Damon, who came to us from the American Heart Association, where he served as Regional Community Impact Director, is putting together a team of people who will help us reach our most vulnerable and historically underserved. We have residents who have concerns about the vaccine, and some are not being reached with the preregistration information. Damon and his team are building on the network of community partners we have to ensure we get the message out to everyone on how to get the vaccine. We are aware that not everyone has access to a computer and cannot register for the vaccine by email. DPH has partnered with the County Older Residents Program to assist older individuals who do not have access to an email. And those individuals are encouraged to call the Health Department at 314-615-2660. A member of our Health Department team will document the caller's name and the call back number, and that information is then shared with the staff of the County Older Residents Program. They will call those on that list and fill out the registration form over the phone. As appointments are made available, staff from the Older Residents Program will reach out to schedule their appointment over the phone as well. And in addition, the Health Department has relationships with advocacy organizations for residents or disabled and homebound. We are relying on these relationships to provide access to the vaccine for our residents unable to leave their homes. And we are looking at registration opportunities within communities, and we will work with our elected leaders and community organizations to determine the best way to do that. We are working to provide several vaccine sites across the county to make access as easy as possible. We know that transportation is a challenge for many as well, so we will do all we can to make the sites easy to get to. And tomorrow, I will announce the location of our first mass vaccination site, which will be in North County. And this will greatly accelerate our efforts to get more of our residents vaccinated. And I'm excited about the partnerships we are forging to make this happen. And we are also working with our health advisory network to identify other groups that would not have easy access to vaccine distribution, such as cancer centers. And while the state of Missouri is working with CVS and Walgreens to handle vaccines for nursing homes and assisted living facilities, there are some facilities that are not connected to the state's vaccination efforts. And we are working with them to get staff and residents vaccinated. Our Health Department has a contact with an interpreter service available for any assistance needed in providing information about preregistering and vaccine appointments. This is a big task, but I cannot think of one more urgent or more vital to our community than we are working around the clock to put in place a system that ensures everyone has access to a vaccine as they become available. I urge everyone to preregister with a county or with a hospital. Multiple registrations are fine, but please do not make more than one appointment. Doing so could delay the opportunity for someone else to get a shot. And the email to preregistered is dphcovidvaccine@stluisco.com. For those without internet access, please call 314-615-2660. That's all for now. I have another commitment at 7:00 tonight, but I'd be glad to answer any follow-up questions. Please contact my staff or my office in the morning. Thank you.
Do we have any reporters, special committees, Madam Clerk?
We do not, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We will move to public forum. How many speakers do we have?
We have four this evening.
We have four registered speakers. When you, your name is called or announced, please listen for the clerk to ask you to begin speaking and then state your first and last name, as well as your zip code. The clerk will inform you when you're three minutes to run. We take this portion of our agenda very seriously. We want to hear from our constituents. So with that, Madam Clerk, please call the first constituent.
Yes, ma'am. Our first speaker this evening is Jeff Kramer, followed by Joan Smith-Lauer.
Okay. The first thing I want to mention is that I feel our county citizens should have the opportunity to register, to speak at least a couple hours before the start of the council meetings, because a 28-minute window doesn't give them enough time to get registered and then set up their cameras and mics. It seems obvious to the residents of St. Louis County that Clancy, Tracus, and Dunaway have supported County Executive Sam Page over the past year, but I'm not sure what they are really gaining by supporting him. On Friday, January 15th, four people voted for Days and Chair, and Harder is the Vice Chair, and the majority ruled four to three. I am proud of these council members for standing up to Clancy, who clearly is the only bully of this group, although Tracus has certainly shown his true colors. Lisa, do you really want to pursue a lawsuit against your own colleagues? If so, I have many questions for you. Did you work for the county in a fair and transparent manner and respect your other council members and county residents? Did you consult with the rest of the councilmen about the basis of your plans prior to the meeting on January 5th, when you asked the council to vote for a Chair and Vice Chair? Does the Charter state that Fitch, Harder, Days, and Webb need to consult with or listen to the advice of the County Council? Does the Charter absolutely and specifically state that a councilman is able to participate and vote five days after their term expires? Does the Charter absolutely and specifically state that a new councilman is... Excuse me. Does the Charter allow you to use citizen tax dollars to sue other council members who sought to rectify the injustice of preventing newly-elected Councilwoman Shalonda Webb from voting on behalf of her constituents? Lisa, you can clearly see where I'm going with this. This ridiculous and petty lawsuit that you and the County Councilor cooked up is solely your own fight for control of the council and our county government. Lisa, I ask you, did Sam put you up to this? Did you state your intention to vaccinate every county resident? And is this your job to do so? Sam Page, were you asked to attend the hearing in Jeff City today? Why weren't you there? Have you ever backed up your decisions with real statistics to prove yourself? Is there a financial gain or interest you have in all of these mandates and vaccines? Or do you take pleasure in ruining lives and businesses? If so, that would be a conflict of interest and a violation of your oath to serve the residents of St. Louis County. Sam, do you have any plans to discuss any other topic in your press conferences that are not related to COVID? No one wants to, the County Council or County Health Department, to mandate masks or vaccines. We have the right as individuals to choose whether we want to vaccinate ourselves. You cannot justify that businesses, churches, and schools are the reason for a vaccine. Hopefully, this has not been the reason why businesses have suffered so much in St. Louis County, but it has certainly affected many children of their own education.
Our next speaker is Joan Smith-Lauer, followed by Josh Shear.
Madam Clerk, Joan Smith-Lauer has dropped off, so we'll have to move to the next speaker.
Okay, we'll reach out to Ms. Smith-Lauer for her comments. Our next speaker is Josh Shear.
Thank you. Josh Shear, 63011. A long, long time ago, in a place that was full of conspiracy theorists and science deniers, we heard people screaming from the rooftops, "Show me the data," and "PCR tests are unreliable." Who were these people? Were they scientists? Were they anesthesiologists? No, they were woke. And not the sad Lisa Clancy type of woke, but woke to a world of actual indisputable facts and common sense. I know that's a foreign concept to some on this council, but it is only a conspiracy theory until it becomes true. The World Health Organization, on, on the day Joe Biden was inaugurated, no less, released new coronavirus testing guidelines that will result in fewer positive cases. Now, I can get into cycle counts, false positive rates, but Sam Page isn't interested in science or facts. Instead, he's interested in pushing the global agenda, aka the Great Reset, as we have seen other Democrat-run cities over the past week: Chicago, DC, California, et cetera. I give the over-under at three weeks until we see Sam Page in a so-called press conference where he loosens the grip of his restrictions. Will he contribute the lower positive case numbers to the PCR test having a lower cycle count? I doubt it. Instead, he will give credit to his unconstitutional mask mandates, lockdowns, and absurd social distance guidelines without providing a shred of evidence. Sam Page will never admit that there has never been a repeatable scientific study to support mask-wearing, social distancing, closing businesses, closing schools, or that shutting down kids' sports saved any lives whatsoever. But that's okay, because the more the agenda is pushed upon us, again, the Great Reset, the more people start waking up to the fraud. Regardless of your agenda, Sam Page, it is time to fully open businesses and restaurants. It is time to support in-person learning. It is time to allow unlimited spectators at kids' sports. It is time to rid ourselves of social distancing and mask mandates. And it's time to start accepting personal responsibility and our God-given freedom to choose how we keep ourselves healthy. It is not my responsibility to keep others healthy. It has never been the government's or the so-called Health Department's job to dictate how we choose to live our lives. The agenda is too obvious now. More of us are waking up. It is time to remove the mask. It's also time to update the website and label Rita Days as the new Chairperson. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Arnie Deanoff.
Thank you very much, councilmembers. My name is Arnie C. A.C. Deanoff, state and county public advocate. And a couple of meetings ago, on the Friday County Council meeting, I brought a conflict of interest to you because of the relationship of dispatcher Mark Pillier and Chief of Police Mary Barton. I was calling for an investigation by an outside investigation, that not being the St. Louis County Police, and asking you that the Missouri Highway Patrol or the Federal Bureau of Investigations come and investigate the N-word and the F-word used by County Dispatcher Mark Pillier, the brother-in-law of Chief Mary Barton. In addition, I also requested that council meeting an investigation by the council's Ethics Committee. I've not heard any discussion or debate among the council or referral to the Ethics Committee. I think that there's some serious questions about the racist remark made by Mark Pillier, and it puts the leadership ability of Chief Mary Barton in question. I would like to see the County Council pass a resolution, send it to the Board of Police Commissioners for them to take some action against the current chief and against the current, uh, going-ons within the Department of Police. Bigotry and hate will not be tolerated. Xenophobia will be squashed. Mark Pillier was... We're not sure if he was fired or if he resigned as his public dispatcher position. We, as a public, have a right to know. Number one, was he fired? I think the full disclosure needs to be made to the public. Was he allowed to retire? Was Mark Pillier given his full pension? Did he resign on his own initiative, or was he forced into resigning? Those are questions that the public has a right to know. With the council's debate in Circuit Court and hiring of outside law firms, which is on your agenda, what will be the cost to taxpayers at $500 to $575 an hour? Can you ask for representation to be donated from law firms, giving back to the community instead of charging taxpayers? The county should now be in the Capitol Building. I am watching on my phone right now the Small Business Committee, in which there's an attack underway in the state Capitol complex against St. Louis County and Sam Page. They want to take control over health issues from St. Louis County, and they want to take control of the County Home Rule Charter. Nick Shore, who does not live in his own district of the 107, supposedly in O'Fallon, but he actually lives in Defiance, 22 miles away from the border, is in violation of the state constitution, and other state reps from St. Charles County are mixing their business in health matters in St. Louis County. They're wanting to pass new laws to assert the authority.
Madam Chair, that was the final speaker.
Introduction to bills.
Yes, ma'am. Bill number 25, introduced by Councilmember Days and ordinance, approving acceptance of donation of $1,200 from St. Timothy's Episcopal Church and appropriating same for support of a family court outreach program for detention residents. Bill number 26, introduced by Councilmember Days and ordinance, amending ordinance number 27,589 pertaining to a grant of up to $1,200,000 from the United States Department of Justice and appropriating the same for support of the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Lead Program. Bill number 27, introduced by Councilmember Days and ordinance, authorizing the County Executive to execute a contract with United States Fish and Wildlife Service in connection with restoration of prairie habitat at St. Vincent Park. Bill number 28, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway, an ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for use of 2.238 acres of right-of-way near Creve Court Park. Bill number 29, introduced by Councilmember Tracus and ordinance, amending Title 12, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances, 1974, as amended, traffic code by enacting and adding one new provision to Schedule 6. Bill number 30, introduced by Councilmember Harder, an ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute a contract with Hanson Professional Services, Inc. for professional engineering services in connection with the Taxiway Alpha Pavement Rehabilitation Project at Spirit of St. Louis Airport. Bill number 31, introduced by Councilmember Days and ordinance authorizing the County Councilor to execute a contract with Mix O'Toole LLC to provide legal services to the St. Louis County Board of Equalization. Bill number 32, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an emergency ordinance authorizing the County Executive to accept an emergency rental assistance grant in an amount of up to $29,735,926.80 from the United States Department of the Treasury appropriating said grant funds for support of a Housing Stability Assistance and Services Program, authorizing the County Executive and the Director of the Department of Human Services to execute necessary documents in declaring an emergency.
Councilwoman Days, I, I actually would like to move this through to perfection at this time. As you all recall, two weeks ago, this body unanimously approved an urgent request to apply for emergency housing and utility assistance relief money that had been made available by the United States Treasury. We've since been granted this nearly $30 million in this new housing and utility aid, and tonight, I'm asking the council to once again work together and unanimously to approve the request to appropriate the money, which is what Bill 32 does. I've been meeting with representatives of tenants and landlords organizations over the past few weeks, and all are in agreement that this assistance is urgent. Tenants and landlords alike are experiencing hardships because of the pandemic, so let's get this done tonight so we can get money in the hands of those who need it as quickly as possible. So therefore, at this time, I move to enact Rule 19 to suspend Rule Number 6 in order to advance Bill Number 32 to the perfection order of business.
Can I say a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Discussion?
I think that was a discussion before I called for the vote. Councilman Tracus.
Thank you. Well, I have no doubt that the need is real and extensive. I have questions concerning the details of the grant. How much, if not all, of the money is designed and intended for rent relief? One. Two. How will the money be dispersed? Will it be paid directly to landlords? Will it go to tenants? So I'm not opposed to perfecting it tonight. However, I do not think that I would be in favor of final passage tonight until we have answers on those questions. The details in terms of how this money's going to be distributed and to whom. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Clancy, do you have a response at this time?
Well, they're working out some of the details. I was privy to a meeting today where they were talking about how we could possibly make sure that payments can go directly to landlords. And I do believe there is a cap on the administrative fees. I think 10% for this bill. So 90% of it has to go directly to rent and utility assistance. So those are my responses. I would still like to see how far we can get this tonight. I would still like to see how far we can get this tonight.
I will move that forward. There was a motion and a second, I believe, Madam Clerk, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstain.
This Councilman Tracus won his abstention recorded.
I do.
Councilwoman Clancy, you recognize?
Yes, I'm not sure that we can move forward on it, though, unless we have unanimous approval, so.
For perfection, you only need four.
We're moving, you're moving from introduction to perfection.
The motion did pass.
Madam Chair, I believe the vote was to suspend the rules.
Yes.
And that only takes us a majority, and then the councilwoman can make a motion to perfect, and that will require us a majority as well then.
Got it. Well, with that, then, I move to perfect Bill Number 32.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstain.
Abstention, so noted. Councilwoman Clancy?
I move to advance Bill Number 32 to take up on the final passage order of business.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that means that Bill Number 32 fails to advance to the final passage order of business. So, Councilwoman Clancy, I would suggest that you perhaps get with Councilwoman Tracus and see if you can handle some of the questions that he is asking, get a response to him, and then we will come back with that on the next Tuesday.
Yes, I'll pick it up next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you, thank you. Moving on to perfection.
Bill Number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Bill Number 20.
Bill Number 20 is held.
Bill Number 32, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to hold Bill Number 32.
Bill Number 32 is held.
Bill Number 266, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold Bill 266.
Bill Number 266 is held.
Bill Number 267, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold Bill 267.
Bill 267 is held.
Moving on to Bill Number 302, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Walton Gray.
I move to hold Bill Number 302.
Bill Number 302 is held.
Bill Number 8, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill Number 8. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Bill Number 8 is perfected.
Bill Number 9, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number 9.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Bill Number 9 is perfected.
Bill Number 10, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number 10.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second? Bill Number... All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Bill Number 10 is perfected.
Bill Number 11, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill Number 11. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Bill Number 11 is perfected.
Bill Number 12, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number 12.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Bill Number 12 is perfected.
Bill Number 13, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number 13.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Bill Number 13 is perfected.
Bill Number 14, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number 14.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Bill Number 14 is perfected.
Bill Number 15, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number 15.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Bill Number 15 is perfected.
Bill Number 16, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill Number 16.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Bill Number 16 is perfected.
Bill Number 17, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill Number 17.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Bill Number 17 is perfected.
Bill Number 18, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect Bill Number 18.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Bill Number 18 is perfected.
Bill Number 20, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number 20.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Bill Number 20 is perfected.
Bill Number 21, introduced by Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Please read the substitute.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 21, introduced by Councilmember Harder, an ordinance amending Chapter 503, Title V, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended, Board of Equalization, by repealing and reenacting Sections 503.010, 503.020, 503.030, 503.040, 503.050, and 503.070 pertaining to establishment of an additional Board of Equalization.
Madam Chair, I move to, for the adoption of substitute 1 for Bill Number 21.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor of adoption of the substitute, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 21 is adopted.
I move to...
Councilwoman Harder?
Yes, Madam Chair, move to perfect substitute 1 for Bill Number 21.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries, substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 21 is perfected.
Bill Number 22, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number 22.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Bill Number 22 is perfected.
Bill Number 23, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number 23.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Bill Number 23 is perfected.
Bill Number 24, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number 24.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries, Bill Number 24 is perfected. Moving on to final passage.
Bill Number 320, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Bill Number 320.
Bill Number 320 is held.
Bill Number 14, introduced by Councilmembers Tracus, Days, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Move to hold Bill Number 14.
Bill Number 14 is held.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 76, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
Please hold substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 76.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 76 is held.
Bill Number 202, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Bill Number 202.
Bill Number 202 is held.
Bill Number 220, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
I move to hold Bill Number 220.
Bill Number 220 is held.
Bill Number 1, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 1.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second roll call, please.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 1, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 1 is finally passed.
Bill Number 2, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 2.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 2, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 2 is finally passed.
Bill Number 3, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 3.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 3, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 3 is finally passed.
Bill Number 4, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill 4.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 4, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 4 is finally passed.
Bill Number 5, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 5.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 5, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 5 is finally passed.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Fitch?
I noticed on the vote, it showed that I seconded that, and I think somebody else did, it wasn't me.
Madam Clerk, can you check that, please?
It might have been...
Who did the second?
It was me, Councilwoman Tracus.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tracus.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I made that change, thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Number 6, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 6. Is there a second?
Second.
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 Please call the roll.
Was that Councilmember Fitch?
That was. That time.
Sometimes it's hard to...
Tell the voices.
Which male voice? Okay, sending for votes. Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 6, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 6 is finally passed.
Moving on to Bill Number 7, introduced by Councilmembers Days and Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 7.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 7, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 7 is finally passed. Moving on to resolutions?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have one resolution this evening. Resolution Number 1, introduced by Councilmembers Clancy, Dunaway, and Days.
Please read the resolution.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas a recent report from Arch City Defenders affirms that there have been 12 in custody deaths within the St. Louis County Justice Center within the past 10 years, that the St. Louis County Justice Center ranked among the top 10 jails in the United States with the most in custody deaths between 2015 and 2016, and in that timeframe, six people died in custody, and in 2019, five people died in custody. And whereas, the St. Louis County Council's Justice Health and Welfare Committee, the committee, has held multiple hearings to discuss various concerns received from Department of Justice Services employees, advisors, and members of the public about these deaths and overall operations within the Department of Justice Services. And whereas, these hearings are only one step in the ongoing process of reviewing misconduct and inefficiencies in the Justice Center, thus better advocating for the jail's employees and those in custody. And whereas, the committee, in conjunction with the Justice Services Advisory Board, the board, has convened many times over the last year to address these concerns. And whereas, the Justice Services Advisory Board, the board, has expressed several recommendations pertaining to these concerns during their recent meetings and in writing to the county executive, and has further shared such concerns at various St. Louis County Council Committee hearings, most recently at their January 22, 2021 meeting. And whereas, those recommendations include items such as issuing a request for proposals, RFP, to secure services to conduct a comprehensive independent review into the Justice Services Department, and to recommend best practices toward operating a more humane facility, allowing the board to play a role in advising on the scope of the investigation and the scope of services sought in the RFP, and allowing board members to contribute the names of potential proposers for the Division of Procurement to inform when the RFP is posted. And whereas, during the September 1, 2020 hearing of the Justice Health and Welfare Committee, the committee members unanimously voted to recommend the county conduct, the county conduct a comprehensive external investigation of the Department of Justice Services. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri, as follows. Section 19... Section 1, the County Council affirms the recommendations of the Justice Services Advisory Board and the Council's Committee on Justice, Health, and Welfare outlined above. Section 2, the Administrative Director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to the Chair of the St. Louis County Justice Services Advisory Board, the Director of the Department of Justice Services, and the County Executive.
Councilwoman Days?
Madam.
Councilman Tracus?
Thank you, um, with the agreement of the current sponsors, if possible, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Absolutely, thank you, Councilman Tracus.
So done.
Madam Chair?
Any, yes, I'm sorry, who was that?
Shalonda.
Councilwoman Webb?
Thank you, I would like to also, with the, uh, approval with the other sponsors of the bill, be added to this resolution.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Anyone else?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Fitch?
Uh, a question for Councilwoman Clancy. Refresh my memory, didn't we already pass a resolution asking for this?
I actually introduced this resolution last fall, or I called for this resolution last fall, but it never actually, um, came, came down. Um, there were some, there were some issues at the time that delayed it.
Okay, is there, was there any explanation, he's not here to answer for himself, but do you know why they haven't done one? Already?
Well, they did do an internal, or they did a, there was a report that was just released by the Veracosa Group, who they had engaged to do a personnel investigation, and I believe that, um, it was prudent, or, or what I heard at the time was that it made sense to wait until that review was completed before embarking on another.
And one last question, it, do you have any assurances that, um, County Executive will take this resolution seriously and move forward with our recommendation?
I believe he will.
Okay, yeah, so I'd like to be add- added as well. Madam Chair?
Madam Clerk? Councilman Harder?
Yes, uh, I have a question for Councilwoman Clancy. Does this resolution, does this resolution, uh, fulfill some of the items that Jeff Smith was talking about in his email earlier this week? And the things he was asking for?
It does.
So he's satisfied with your resolution?
Yes, this is aligned to what the Justice Services Advisory Board has been asking for, for some time now.
Okay, please add me to the, to the list as well, as a sponsor.
Thank you all.
Yeah, I don't know if you got me as an add-on or not, there was a lot of static when I asked for it. Thank you.
I did.
Is there anyone else?
I think that's everyone.
All right, thank you, um, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Clancy, did you move for the adoption of the resolution?
I don't believe we had gotten that far yet, so I will officially move for adoption of resolution number 1.
Second.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number 1, there are 7 ayes.
Motion carries, resolution number 1 is adopted. Moving on to other business? Unfinished business?
Yes, ma'am, item number 1.
Uh, we are still waiting to have a hearing on Mr. Dunn do, and we do have another one that I think the County Executives, uh, sent down quite recently. Uh, so we will hold on this order of business, uh, and that will be the order.
Thank you. Item number 2, 6th District.
Liquor license be approved as requested, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no? Motion carries.
Item number 3, 6th District.
Liquor license be approved as requested.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no? Motion carries. We have, um, one prepared order, I believe, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have one prepared order this evening in the matter of donation of various items in support of the Kathy J. Weinman Shelter.
Madam Chairwoman, please move for the adoption of order number 1.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no? Motion carries. Madam Clerk? Uh, I did see another one here from St. Timothy's, are we going to deal with that one or not?
Timothy's?
Yes, it was accepted donation for, um.
That was bill number 25.
Okay, so we've dealt with that?
That one came down as legislation.
Okay.
Instead of a prepared order.
All right.
It came down as a bill instead of prepared order, excuse me.
All right. Any other business to come before the body this evening? I would like for, uh, Diane, if you would, to make the necessary preparations for a committee of the whole on Thursday, um, uh, January 28th at 1:00 PM. Uh, we, uh, have some issues dealing with the vaccinations, although we heard a brief summary, uh, from the County Executive, we would like to hear from, uh, Schremschmidt and, uh, Dr. Dusset, uh, and have them to present a plan, I think that was recommended on our last meeting, uh, to present to us a plan of how the, uh, vaccines will be implemented. Uh, and, uh, we know we don't have any, but when we do, we need to have a plan in place to move forward. So would you, uh, make sure that that happens, Madam Clerk?
Um, Councilwoman Days?
Yes.
I, did you survey councilmembers about their availability? This is the first that I'm hearing about a date and a time, and I think that it's important that as many people can attend, I don't think my office heard about this.
Well, I will, um, we will circle back around, but I think we did. I'm not sure if everyone, uh, was able to make that, but we will circle around again and, and see if that time is good for everyone. If it's not, we can make adjustments, that's not a problem at all, but at some point, we do need to make sure, uh, that we have a meeting of this.
Yeah, my office has no record of a request, so I would appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have not either.
Other concerns? All right, we will do that. Any other business to come before the body at this time?